Yeah. Okay, so the first question is determine any points of discontinuity. This continuity and I'll try to make I'll try my best to make this one as neat as reasonable. I don't know if I'll be able to do it, but we'll see. On F of T where F of T is T plus 3 over T squared plus 5T plus 6. Okay, so well, to do this, a pretty much a point of discontinuity is is. Well, a quick way to do it is just to look at what's not in the domain of this one, right? Because if it was just the top function, it would it would be continuous everywhere. T plus 3 is continuous everywhere, but you can't. The only restrictions you can't divide by 0. So let's see where the denominator is equal to 0. So T squared plus 5T plus 6 equals 0. Okay, well, we need two numbers that add to the middle number, multiply the last one. So there's going to be T plus 2, T plus 3 equals 0. Right, so we have two points of discontinuity. So the whole thing looks like this, T plus 3 over T plus 2, T plus 3.
Wouldn't the T plus 3 cancel out?
It would cancel out, but it would still be a point of discontinuity. Yeah.
It would be like the whole, right?
Yes, exactly right. So our two points of discontinuity are well, not X, sorry, sorry, running X. So the two points are T equals negative 2, T equals negative 3. So at negative 2, you have a vertical asymptote or an infinite. Infinite discontinuity. And at T equals 3, you just have a removable discontinuity. Just. Yeah, there you go. And there you go. Excellent. And of course, if anyone has questions, just stop me and I will do the questions. So next one is, I guess I should label it. So this one's number 2. Number 2 is decide if the given function is continuous at the given point. If it's discontinuous, what type of discontinuity? And the function is F of X equals. And it's a piecewise function. So it's X sine X. If X is greater than or equal to pi and it's X tan X. If X is, oh, I said this one wrong, less than or equal to pi. And it's X tan X if X is greater than pi. And we're looking for if it's discontinuous at, I can't spell at, X equals pi. Okay, so since X equals pi is right on the split of this piecewise function, right? On the split of the two, they're called clauses, but the two different parts of it. So what you have to do is you we'd have to, first of all. Oh, no, if it's continuous there and it's in this domain, then we actually just have to. Well, so continuity, so if if the limit as X approaches C of F of X equals F of C. F of C, I mean, whoops, F of C, then it's continuous at point C, right? That's what it means, what it means to be continuous. So for this to be true, the left handed and the right handed limits have to be true. So we have to see the left handed limit coming to X and the right handed limit coming to X. Okay, so let's start with the left hand limit. Let's say the limit as X approaches pi from the left. Yep, of F of X. Okay, so that's a little less than pi, right? So that would be this one here, right? So that's going to be. The limit. As X approaches pi from the left of X sine X. Right, and I'm pretty sure we can just evaluate this. What sign of pi? Sign of pi is 0, I think. Yes, sign of pi is 0, so it's just 0. It just evaluates to 0, right? So this is. And then let's see the limit from the other side. So the limit. Limit as X approaches pi from the right side of F of X. Well, that's going to be the other function in there. So it's going to be limit as X approaches pi from the positive side of X times tan X. Right? And so this is going to be pi. Well, what's tan of pi? Tan of pi, I have no idea. So let's take a look on my calculator. To make sure I'm in radians, okay, so tan of pi is 0 again. So that's what we're looking for. So it's, I won't even write pi times 0, I'll just write this is this is equal to 0. So since the the limit as X approaches pi. From the. Well, so we can identify that the limit as X approaches pi of F of X. Exists and is equal to 0, right? So then F of pi better be equal to 0, right? F of pi better be equal to 0, which it will be, right? So and let's see, so let's see, F of pi. Well, that's just going to be this first function evaluated at pi, which is 0, right? Therefore, continuous. Because the limit as X approaches C of F of X is 0 and F of C is also 0. They agree, continues. That made sense? Okay, question number 3 is find the values of K that make the following function continuous over the given interval. So F of X. Equals another piecewise function. So it's E to the KX. If. And just read this properly, hold up the paper so I can see it better. If X is between 0 and 4, not including 4, and it's X plus 3. If X is between 4, including 4, and 8, including 8. Okay, so we're looking for K that makes this continuous over the interval. Well, this is continuous everywhere. This is continuous everywhere it's defined, right? Well, no, it is just continuous everywhere, period. Yeah, so. The only place this could possibly not be continuous is at X equals 4. Only place. Not or possibly. Not continuous. Continuous is at X equals 4. Okay, so let's identify. Well, so we want it to be equal. We want the limit to exist. We want it to be continuous, right? So again, so if something's continuous, that means the limit as X approaches C of F of X is equal to F of C. Right, so well, what is the actual, what is the function at X equals 4? Well, the function at X equals 4, well, we would use the bottom definition, right? Because we're using X equals 4. And so then F of 4 is equal to 4 plus 3, which is 7. So what we want is we want the. We want the limits, well, pretty much we want this function to agree with that. We also want the pretty much the limit as E to the KX approaches 4. Because it can't actually equal 4 because it's not in the section, right? We want that limit to be. Equal to 7, right? So in other words, we want. I think I can just, I think I can just plug this in. E to the KX equals 7. Oh, no, no, not equal to the KX, sorry. So we want the, yeah, so we want E to the K times 4 to equal 7. Right, because 7 is the value of the function. So now we just solve for K, right? So to solve for K, we can say this is 4K ln E equals ln 7. Right, ln E is just 1, so it's 4K equals ln 7. So K equals ln 7 over 4. Okay, and then that's the K value there. I mean, I can try to prove it. But yeah, that's, I also don't have the answers for this. I should actually be checking the answers. I have the answer, I printed 2 of them by accident without the answers. And then the next few I printed with the answer. So maybe I'll just, I'll pull the answers up just to make sure. I'm doing everything right. Is everybody following me so far? Makes it making sense?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's right because they do the exact same thing.
Oh, and is the, do you have the answers up?
Uh, yeah, I have the answers.
Oh, okay, and and yeah, that's where I was about to go define the answers. Am I right so far?
Yeah, you're right so far.
Okay, good, then is it okay if you just for the for this first one? You just tell me if I'm right for the for the questions? If you have it open?
Yeah.
Okay, so there you go. So that was question 3. Let's take a question 4. So question 4 is determine, so it has a couple of parts to it. So determine whether each of the given statements is true. Justify your response with an example or a counter example. So the first statement is that the function F of T. Equals 2. E to the T minus E to the negative T. Is continuous everywhere. Okay, so what would this be? Let's see, so if this was. 0, 1. I, well, so the only place where this couldn't be continuous, right? Because the top function is always continuous, it's just 2. Is where E to the T minus E to the negative T, that where that equals 0. Right, and. Well, E to the T is always a positive number. E to the negative T is also always a positive number. So is there a time when this? Yeah, there is a time. So for example, if T equals 0, then this would be E. Where's E to the 0 minus E to the 0 equals 0, right? So. In other words, 1 minus 1 equals 0. So yeah, 0 equals, so there is a point where this is discontinuous. Specifically, there might be more. I think it might just be this one. But one example is where T equals 0. And now this discontinuous because the denominator equals 0. Okay, so that was part 1. So part 2 is the left hand and the right hand limits of F of X. Oh, so this one's actually just all words, so I won't write it. I'll just say it out loud. So the left hand and the right hand limits of F of X as X approaches A exists. Or if the left hand and right hand limits of F of X as X approaches A exists and are equal. Then F cannot be discontinuous at X equals A. So that's not true, right? So so first of all, sorry, this one does not true. And then the second one is also not true. For example. For example, if I have a function like this and I have. This is pretty much every discontinuity is this. So for that point right there, for X equals C. The left hand and the right hand limits exist. Oh, sorry, A, sorry, I switched A. And they are equal and F is also discontinuous. So there's your proof by contradiction. Well, I don't know if that's proof by contradiction, but yeah, I guess it is proof by contradiction. But proof of a very basic statement, so not that impressive. Part 3 is if a function is not continuous at a point, then it is not defined at that point. That's also not true. Another example would be, can I spell, not true. Well, so, oh, sorry, if it's, yeah, sorry, if a function is not continuous at a point. So it's not continuous there, but I define it up here. There you go, there's an example. It's not continuous at this point A, but it is defined at A with that point up there. Okay, let's move on to number 5.
I just had a quick question about like part, the way you find like T.
Yeah, this one here?
Yeah, part 1. So is there like a way you can like do it like, like where you just use like lawn? Or is it just like trial and error?
Like you want to solve for T. That's what you're saying, you want to solve for T, right?
Yeah.
Let's see if I can do it. E to the T equals E to the minus T, you can do that, right? We could take, we could take, so I just rearranged this equation, right? I can take the lawn of both sides. So it'd be T times lawn E equals. E, oh, this isn't giving me, oh, no, no, this is giving me a good answer now. Sorry, negative T, oh, I'm sorry, screwing this up a little bit. So the the left side is T lawn E, the right side is negative T lawn E, right? So obviously, the lawn E's go away, T equals negative T. Well, the only solution for this is T equals 0. But that's the only solution for this.
Okay.
For this, this T equals 0. Does that make sense? There's no other solution. I mean, you can divide both sides by T and but you'd be dividing both sides by 0 there, right? So T equals.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, okay, number 5. Find the slope of the secant line between X 1 and X 2 for the following functions. Should I just skip this? Is anybody interested in finding the secant line? If anybody is, I will 100% do it, but.
Yeah, because.
So should I do, should I do it or?
Yeah, you could do it. Wait, is it just like plugging it in and then?
Yeah, no, 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 I'll do it. If you have any confusion, I'll do it here. So F of X equals 6X to the 2 thirds. Plus 2X to the 1 third. So that's our function. And we want to look at for the slope of the secant between X 1, which is 1, and X 2, which is 27. Okay, so the slope of the secant is just F of X 2 minus F of X 1 over X 2 minus X 1. Right? So. If I just fix that line now, though. Right, so so we just write, that's the slope of the secant between 2 points. It's the rise over the run between 2 points, same as that. So well, what would this be? Well. F of X 2, so that's. I'll just write it here, so 6 times 27 to the 2 thirds plus 2 times 27 to the 1 third. Minus, so 6 plus 2, 6 plus 2. Over 27 minus 1. Right, so then, well, what's the cube root of 27? I think that's 3, and then 3 squared is 9. So 6, 6 times 9. Plus 2 times 3. Minus 8 all over 26, right? So 6 times 9 is. 54. Plus 6 minus 8 over 26. So then that is going to be 52 over 26, which equals 2. And they pass this one for the C. Does that make sense? Any part, any part didn't make sense? Just let me know.
No, that makes sense, thanks.
Yeah, 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 that makes sense, okay.
So yeah, it's just, it's a rise of a run formula, pretty much. So problem number 6. We have. Let me for a second. So find F prime of A using, it says using equation 3.3. Have a feeling this is the first principles definition. So F prime of, so specifically, the function F of X. Equals square root of X minus 2, right? We're looking for at A. At A, which is 6. Right, so. From here, we're looking for F prime of 6. So F prime of 6, if we if we use the limit formula, is going to be the limit as H approaches 0 of F of 6 plus H. Minus F of 6 all over H. Okay, and of course, so using our formula is going to be. F of 6 plus H is going to be the square root of 6. Plus H minus 2. And then minus, well, what's, so this would be F of 6. So 6 minus 2 is 4, square root of 4 is 2. All over H. Okay, so this would simplify as H approaches 0. The radical here would just be 4 plus H minus 2 all over H. Looks like we have to multiply by the. It's called conjugate. So this is 4 plus H plus 2. 4 plus H plus 2. So this equals the limit as H goes to 0 of 4 plus H. Right, these 2 multiplied together. Plus 2 times this, minus 2 times this, that cancels out. So then it's just negative 2 times 2, which is negative 4. All over. H times root 4 plus H plus 2. So now at the side here, well, okay, we can cancel the 4. So we also cancel the Hs here now. So and I'll also apply the limit in that same step. So the final, one of the final steps is going to be. 4 plus 0 plus 2, right? So the square root of 4 plus 0 is the square root of 4, square root of 4 is 2. So 2 plus 2 is 4, so 1 over 4 is our answer. Okay, anybody stop me if they have a problem? Otherwise, just gonna move on. Okay, so. Number 7 is use the limit definition of a derivative to show that the derivative does not exist at X equals A for the given function. So the given function is F of X equals X to the power of 2 thirds. And our A is 0. Okay, so well, we're gonna have to use our, we're trying to find F prime of 0, right? So we're trying to prove that the derivative does not exist at this point. And essentially proving is just, I'm sorry, missed the limit. Proving is just, it's just to try to calculate it and show that we get to impass. Okay, so. To do something about that always happens. If they hold the pen differently, I might be better. Okay, so 0 plus H minus F of 0. All over H. Okay, so. Yeah, we're, I can already tell we're gonna run into something funny, but let's see. So. This is equal to the limit as X approaches 0 of, so F of 0 plus H is going to be 0. Plus H to the power of 2 thirds. Minus, well, minus 0, because F of 0 is is just going to be 0, right? Minus 0 over H. Okay, so now what could we do? Well, we could. Well, sorry, so, okay, never mind, never mind, I'm making more confusion myself here. Limit as, sorry, it shouldn't be X, but they're right, X for the bottom top 1, 2. No, I didn't make the mistake. It's not the limit as X approaches, sorry, so limit as H approaches 0. As H approaches 0 of, yes, of course, 0 plus H is just H to the power of 2 thirds over H. Right, and so now. Well, why wouldn't, hold on, let's just see what this looks like. So then this is. H to the power of 2 thirds minus 1, which is, there should be a limit thing here still. Limit as H goes to 0. Limit as H goes to 0 of, so that's going to be minus 3, so negative. So the limit as H goes to 0. What am I talking about? Sorry, I'm just saying, I'm writing what I'm saying on that. Limit as H goes to 0 of H to the power of negative 1 third. Okay, and so this is the same thing as the limit as H goes to 0 of. Negative 1 third, yeah, of. 1 over cube root H. Which doesn't exist. I don't think there's, I think that, let's, I think there might be a more, I feel like I'm not done. But this might be enough to just say doesn't exist. Let me quickly look at the graph. I just know we won't have the graph on the thing, but. Yeah, so well, so first of all, the limit doesn't exist. But how do we prove it like this? Well, I think, I mean, I see it as there's no way to simplify this more and that limit doesn't exist. So. I guess there you go. That's it, you can't have the denominator equals 0.
Wouldn't it be because the denominator is 0? So it's infinity and infinity doesn't exist?
Yeah, so you can't say the limit. And even if you said the limit is is infinity, well, which infinity? If you look at the graph, here, share my, let's change this. New share. If you look at this, the graph of it, well, it's going to positive infinity and negative infinity at the same time. So the limit doesn't even exist, even if you consider. Infinity as a number, which it isn't. But even then, it's not, yeah. Okay, number 8. Number 8 is use the definition of the derivatives to find F prime of X. So we're looking for F prime of X where F of X equals X plus 1 over X. Okay, so let's give it a try. F prime of X is equal to the limit as H goes to 0 of F of X plus H minus F of X. All over H. Equal to the limit as H approaches 0. So F of X plus H is going to be X plus H plus 1 over X plus H. Minus X plus 1 over X. All over H. Okay. So what can we do here? Well, I mean. Could start combining some fractions for sure. Let's, I guess let's give that a try. I don't know if that's going to take us anywhere, but let's see. So limit as H approaches 0. So I'm going to combine these 2 fractions, right? So this is over 1. So I need to multiply top and bottom here by X plus H. And that's all I need to do. So that'll be X plus H squared plus 1 over X plus H minus X. I guess I'll do the same thing here. Not for really any particular reason, but yeah, there you go. Still should be in brackets, all over H. Okay, I will continue to collect the brackets. Let's see if that does anything. And then I guess expand that, probably will cancel the x squared. As H approaches 0 of, so I need to multiply top and bottom here by. I guess by X, yeah, I was trying to think of a simpler way to do it, but. It's X times X plus H squared plus 1. Minus X plus H. Times X squared plus 1. All over X times X plus H all over H. And so now I'm going to bring that H to that bottom part there. So this is going to be the limit as H approaches 0. And I will, in the same step, expand that foil, that thing there, right? So it's going to be X times X squared plus 2XH plus H squared plus 1. Minus X plus H, could have also foiled this, but I guess not. All over X. Yep, XX plus H times H. Okay, I will, next step, I'll just expand this probably, yeah, expand this and then foil that. Next step is the limit as H goes to 0 of X cubed plus 2X squared H plus H squared X. Plus X minus X, I guess I'll put that in brackets. So X cubed plus X plus HX squared plus H. Over X, X plus H times H. Okay, well, what's going to cancel? X cubed and this X cubed, X and this X. One of those and that. And that's it, and that's all we need. Okay. So well, what's left? So the limit as H goes to 0 of X squared H plus H squared X. Yeah, that makes sense, minus H. All over, write it like this, HX times X plus H. Okay, well, I can factor out an H from the top. So it's going to be X squared plus HX minus 1. All over HXX plus H. all over h x, x plus h. Uh, I still need the limit here. I mean, as age goes to zero equals the limit as age goes to zero. Well, actually, we can just apply the limit. So actually, I don't need to, well, I guess I'm here already. Now, I, there was nothing else to write. I just applied the limit. So I will, um, so applying the limit, I'm just left with x squared minus one over x times x. Right? So which is x squared minus one over x squared. Okay, and again, I hope that is correct. I don't, I doubt we got this far without a correct answer. Okay.
Sorry, could you like scroll up back to like number six?
Number six? Yeah, here, here's number six. Okay, so. Scroll down a little bit. Oh, sorry, is that, are you good to go? One, six? Yeah, good. Okay, so uh, we just did, which one? We just did number eight. So let's, we want to number nine, or almost this last question of the first page. So number nine is the, the following limit represents the derivative of the function y equals f x at x equals a, find f of x and a. Okay, so the following limit, which is limit as age approaches zero of two, three plus h squared minus three plus h minus fifteen all over h. Okay, so our goal is to find our goal is to find f of x and the point that I'm trying to differentiate at. Okay, well, I think it's pretty clear the, the function is that uh squared. And the point is, this is the, the number in the front here. It's a, it's f of, f of a plus h, so a equals three. But if, if anyone had any trouble with that, I, I answered it quickly, but if anybody had any trouble with that, um let me know. To find it, I just treated this like, so it was two x squared minus x. And could ask us more, I don't, that, that's, that's, okay, done the first page. Only two more questions in the first lab. So uh, number ten is sketch. Well, I don't think I'm gonna do any sketching of graphs. Use that for sure, so the function is not differentiable at one. Uh, I'm, I'm not gonna sketch it. Okay, well, I, I, it's, it's pretty simple to sketch, actually, so. I know, I just said I'm not gonna sketch it, and I started sketching it, but it's not too bad. So uh, x equals one is the, it's a piecewise function. First, it's x squared plus two, so I'm gonna guess it's like that. Sorry, negative x squared plus two. And then, and of course, I drew it wrong, x is less than or equal to one, yes. So it's going to be more so like this. And afterwards, it is is just equal to x, so it'll be like, it'll be like that. But I have a feeling one negative one. Yeah, so sorry, my drawing is very bad. This should be like this would actually work. It would go, it would look like that. Okay, there you go. So is it differentiable? If some things, let me think for a second. Use the definition of the derivative to show that the function is not differentiable at x equals one, but it's continuous at x equals one. One. How can it not be differentiable? I I guess, okay, so uh, yes, with the, but how do we use the definition of the derivative to help us with this? Well, what would the derivative be? Yeah, I just don't even know how I would do this with the definition of the derivative. Yeah, I'm not sure this one, I don't, um, is there, is, there's a solution, I think, actually. So maybe I'll look at the solution. I, I don't know, yeah, I'm not sure I do this. Let's see what they say.
Are they just do like the thing where you just like plug it in into that like formula thing where it's
They, yeah, okay. Uh, where do I go to find it? Lab questions there, number?
Yeah.
Or solutions. Almost made it through without the solutions. So we're doing number nine, number ten. So, yeah, they draw it, the same drawing as I did. They, uh, so the limit has to exist from both sides. Since the druda does not exist. Also, they plug it into they, they plug it into just finding. Yeah, okay, this kind of makes sense. Well, they proved that the limit doesn't exist, and I guess the limit. I know, does the limit exist? The limit is experts is one, but that's how it is. Maybe two, no, it's different. Has it, has it differently? The limit as x. That doesn't even make sense. Oh, no, maybe it doesn't make sense. What are the functions? Yeah, I don't really get it. I thought it made sense for a second, but no, it doesn't make sense. I don't know. So what they do is they find some limit, which I, I don't really know, it's this limit as the, so the, the limit they find is, is the limit as x approaches one from the left of f of x minus f of one over x minus one. And we have a piecewise function, so it's just whatever, it's okay. But well, this x approaches one from the bottom. Oh, but they visually agree. I don't know why they don't agree here. And I also don't know where this where this came from. This isn't the limit of any particular, this like, this isn't the function. This is the limit as x.
Isn't that like the y thing for like, wow, point one?
Yeah, that's the, kind of looks like it. So let's see. So if, if this is kind of similar to saying x approaches one.
Oh, wait, no, nevermind, the top one is the y and then the bottom one is the x, okay.
I don't get what they're doing. Maybe, I, I, I don't go through. I say we move on.
Yeah, we, we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, it's fine. There's some, something about limits going on here that I don't understand, but I don't know what they're doing. It's fine. So eleven. For the following function, use the limit. Uh, well, I already said it, limit as age goes to zero. Um, of f prime of x, whatever, of the definition of the dirt. Uh, but actually, the definition of the second derivative. Okay, so to find f double prime. Plus, I guess that equals f double prime of x, where f of x equals four x squared. Well, I'll cheat a little bit and I'll uh go right to the first derivative, okay, but using that, let's find the second. Okay, so the first derivative is a, is a. Well, okay, so now the limit as age goes to zero, eh, uh, so for f double prime. So that's f. I won't even write it. So f prime of x plus h, so eight x plus h minus x, x over h limit as age goes to zero of eight x plus h minus eight x over h. Oh, minus, this is, this is eight h. Equals the limit as age goes to zero of these two cancel and the age cancels, but I'll still actually write eight years over age, so she doesn't cancel here. And then now ages cancel, apply the limit, but doesn't do anything is equal to. Okay, that's lab number one. Oh, that's, oh, I even did it in the wrong order. Okay, so that was lab number four. Um, I meant to start with lab number three. So, um, but honestly, see if it's a lab number three, had a few limit questions. That's why I went to do it. Yeah, let's, let's do the limit questions of lab number three. I won't do all the questions. There's only a couple. Okay, uh, yeah, so let's move on to, so this is um, lab number three now. So we did lab number, that, that was lab number four. This is gonna be lab three. Uh, and we're gonna start with question uh six of thirteen, but even some of these will skip, because I, I just, I just wanna do the questions. So number six is, is just evaluate the limit. Well, okay, this one varies. Okay, well, I'll still do it. Evaluate the limit as x approaches one of x cubed plus three x squared plus five over four minus seven x. Well, what's gonna happen? And we can just, we can just sub it in. So one cubed plus three times one squared plus five over four minus seven times one. Right, so one plus three plus five is eight over four minus seven is minus three, that's seven. So that's minus eight of it. Numbers seven is show that the substitution, well, okay, so use direct substitution to show that the limit leads to indeterminate form, uh, then evaluate it. So I will skip the first step, but I will evaluate it. So limit as x goes to negative three of root x plus four plus one. It's just four minus one over x plus three. Plus, of course, uh, if I were to evaluate this, then the, the bottom would turn to zero, so we're gonna have to multiply by the conjugate, so x plus four plus one over root x plus four plus one. So this is gonna turn to x plus four minus one over uh, x plus three x plus four, root x plus four. Yeah. So what does this do? Well, there's, it's to be a limit there, limit as x goes to negative three. Limit as x goes to negative three, so the top is just gonna be x plus three over x plus three root x plus four plus one. Well, would you look at that? Cancel us. So all we're left with, and I can even apply the limit in this step, well, I won't actually, so limit as x goes negative three of one over, so that's just gonna be root x plus four plus, now I'm gonna apply the limit. So it's one over root negative three plus four plus one one over root one times one, so plus one, I mean, sorry. Root one plus one like that, so that's uh, that was number, that was number eight. I accidentally read the wrong question. It was number eight.
For six, or what you have down for six, I think the, the numerator should be nine.
Let's see, one plus, yes, right. There's, so this is going to be negative, thank you, yeah. Okay, and then let's do number seven now. So number seven is use directs, use direct substitution, so not that interesting of a question, but limit. This is not, not very hard, uh, e to the two x minus x squared. Okay, well, so by direct substitution, e to the two times two is four minus four, which is one. Well, nine is also a very simple, I thought it would be more difficult problems. Um, number nine is, is uh, it's, it's just gonna be pretty much you, you factor the top and bottom, something cancels, you play with it. So is it okay if I skip that? It's really, we'll see if the factor question. Does anyone else here speak now? Otherwise, I'm going to ten. So ten is, okay, so it says assume that the limit as x approaches six of f of x equals four that the limit as x approaches six of, I kind of wrote that weird, but g of x equals nine and the limit as x approaches six of h of x is um express, six, use these facts to evaluate the following limit. Limit is the limit as x approaches six of f of x times g of x well, okay, so all this is doing is a lot of setup for question, which is just, well, you just take the limits of each things individually. So the limit of, as I spoke to six of f of x is four times for g of x is nine minus six. Right, so thirty six, six is and I think I'm gonna skip a couple of these, because they're not too interesting. The only thing here that, and I, I don't think I can even answer this question, but it says, use the squeeze theorem to evaluate the following limit. The limit as x approaches zero of f of x where f of x equals, and it's a weird piecewise function, zero if x is a rational x squared if x is irrational. Um, so, well, squeeze theorem in general is just saying, is just saying if you have some function f of x, less than or equal to g of x is there equal to h of x, so this function is always sandwiched or squeezed between the other two. Then the limits also work, well, if the limit of this one agrees with the limit of this one, I shouldn't say the limits work, that's not true. If the limit of this one is the limit of this one, and that's also the limit of this at the same point. Um, so well, I, I guess we really wanna put f of x between two functions. So I'll say, it's like this, I just moved the name just because it said that next year. But, uh, what, I, I had no idea what this would prove. G of x is irrational. I'm gonna look at the solution, this, this is just the thing. Okay, well, so what they did is they said. Well, but. Zero of FX is rational. Oh, because it's mostly. Um. So for most numbers, it's it's, um. It's pretty much a straight line at zero, except a bunch of dots. Um, at like irrational numbers like pi. And the negative versions of those. Okay, I guess that does kind of make sense. So this would be, this function would kind of look like this. This is our Y axis. And this is our X axis. Okay, so then. F of X is. That doesn't, F of X is the whole function, the whole piecewise. How can that be between? Parts of itself.
What are all? Are rational functions bigger? Sorry, rational numbers bigger than rational numbers?
Um, they are, well. Not necessarily. I mean, like, so any rational number like pi is three point one four. Four is a rational number. It's bigger. Right?
Yeah.
And and three is a rational number smaller, right? So that doesn't really change that, but. Well, so in general, what this is gonna look like is if I if I draw this part, it's gonna be zero if X is rational. Well, that's. I mean, of course, there's a bunch of holes here for certain irrational numbers, but it's mostly a flat line. And there's like a hole at like pi, negative pi, E. Negative E, and that's gonna be the square. There'll be like some dot like that, right? Like, I don't know. That's my guess, right? So. That's the top part, and I guess I should say. This is like these things right here and the holes. Right? So, um. Well. How? Yeah, okay, okay. Well. I guess you can say. Yeah, it's it's weird to say it. I don't know. It doesn't make sense, but this top one, I can call it G of X. This red function, G of X. And we'll call. Um. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess it's not actually. Wait, we have a G of X. Oh, yeah, G G of X is the sorry lower bound. Yeah. And the X squared is the higher bound, so it's H of X. This doesn't make perfect sense to me, but it's the this kind of parabola shape that we have going here. X, X, H of X. Um, so. Well, since the limit of both of these as X approaches zero, so as X approaches zero of this, it's zero. As X approaches zero of this, it's zero. Therefore, the limit. Of. X as X approaches zero of FX must also be zero. Because this limit is also this limit. So it must be that the squeeze theorem is saying that it also must be this middle.
Okay.
And the the question didn't totally make sense to me. I I what didn't make sense to me is is how. Why you can define that as a G of X and that as H of X? Because. How can parts of the piecewise function? Be greater or less than the piecewise function? Piecewise function is the whole thing. Right? So. I don't really get it, but anyways, that's that's what the solution is. So I guess. I think let's move on to. Lab five, which I. Better use of our time. So lab five. Actually, well, I don't know many questions. So lab five is. Starts with. Uh, let's just try to say. Five, starting. So question number one. Um, find F prime of X. If F of X. Equals. X to the four. Plus two over X. Okay, so not too hard. F prime of X. Is equal to four X cubed. Minus two, uh, minus two. Over X squared. Yeah. If anybody needs an explanation of that, I will go for it, otherwise. Uh, same idea. So I'm not gonna write F prime of X each time. So I was gonna say. Just write the function. So F of X. Equals X squared plus four over X squared minus four. So find the derivative of this. Uh, I will rewrite this. As X squared plus four. Times X squared minus four to the negative one. Because I don't like quotient rule. So F prime of X is gonna be the first one. Times the derivative of the second one. Um, two X plus the derivative of the first one. Times the second. Okay, um, and then, yeah, so this will just turn into. Uh, negative X squared plus four over X squared minus four. Squared. Oh, no, there's still a. So a two X over here. Yeah. Plus two X over. X squared minus four. Um. And, well, I mean. Few more things we can do, I guess. Yeah. Yeah, I guess I guess I can go on because there is a few more things we can do to simplify this. So. I can multiply the top and bottom here by X squared minus four. Minus four. So the next line. Would be, um, negative. So I'll move the two X to the front. X squared plus four. Um. X squared minus force, uh, squared like that. Plus two X times X squared minus four. All of this is over. I wrote it weird to the side there. Um, and so then we can simplify this to negative. Two X times X squared plus four, uh, not four X. Square plus four. Plus. X squared minus four. So it's all. One thing now, yep. That's not gonna get me the right answer. See what they do. X squared minus. X squared minus four, two X minus. Oh, there should be a minus in between. Oh, no. Plus the negatives. No, I guess it's at the front. Oh, I I guess I can't move the negative sign to the front like that. No, I can't. No, it's a negative signs in the front there. That's negative. I don't see what it. Up to here is the same is is, well, not actually the same, but basically the same as the. Basically the same as the thing. I'm just expanding. Let's see, X squared. Well, well, I guess I I can just, I don't have to actually factor out the two X. I just. Expanded anyway, so that would be, no, but it's gonna be. Cubes. Um. Oh. I treat this like a negative. I have to put the negative in there. No, that that also doesn't make sense. Why would I? Okay, but if I do, I done it. The next thing is all right, so. Negative two X. So actually, other than appears, this is. Negative. Negative two. So what that turns into. Is negative two X cubed minus eight X. Plus two X cubed plus eight X. Still not right. I'm just, I'm making some small mistakes.
I'll be negative eight X.
Um.
X squared minus four.
Um. Yeah, yeah, yes. Minus eight X. X squared minus four square. We're good. Cancels cancels. So this is gonna be negative sixteen X over X squared minus four. Square. There you go. Doesn't. Okay. Question three. Um, assume that F of X and G of X are both differentiable for all X. Find the derivative given H of X. That's right. So we're see, we see H of X equals. F of X. G of X over two. Okay, so H prime of X. Well, you can just think of this as a half times the derivative of. The, I guess I'll say like D by DX. F of X. G of X. It's this whole thing in the D by DX. As you can, you take the one half to the front. Okay, so one half. Well, so it's the derivative of the first one. Um. F prime of X times the second one. Plus the first one. Uh, this should be in brackets. The first one. Times the derivative of the second. Okay, and. Um, and there. You can multiply the half in if you want. Don't have to. Okay, four. Um, assume that F of X and G of X are both differential functions with values as given in the following table. Use the table to calculate F prime of three. Um. Okay, well, the table is just a confusing way of giving us F. Good F of X. Right? Oh, oh, okay. At. At X equals three. Yeah. So F of three. Equals minus two. Uh. G of three equals minus four. F prime of three equals eight. G prime of three equals two. So then it gives us H of X equals two X plus F of X. Uh, not plus, sorry, times. There was a quick button for the eraser. I have not found how to put that on my. Pen yet. Um, and we're looking for the derivative at three. They were looking for H prime of three. That's the goal. H prime is three. Okay, well, so first we gotta find each point of X, right? So H prime of X. Equals was the derivative of the first one is two. Plus the derivative of the second one is the derivative of the first. Times the second one. Plus the first one. Times the derivative of the second one. Okay, and then, uh, well, so then H prime of three will just be two plus F. Prime of three. G of three plus F of three. G prime of three. So two plus F prime of three is eight. G of three is minus four. F of three is minus two. G prime of three is two. So two minus thirty two minus four. Right? So that's gonna be minus thirty. Which should be. Okay. Anybody, anybody has any questions? No. Question five, um, find the equation of the tangent lines of the graph. So F of X, I opened something my cursor hasn't. What did I do? Cursor has the loading thing on. I think I'm good. F of X. Equals. X squared plus four over X minus ten. And so we're looking for F prime of, uh, not a friend, I'm actually looking for F prime of eight. So well, so F for F prime of X first, it'll be two X. Minus four over X squared. That's it. So F prime of eight equals sixteen minus four over eight squared. Right? So, um. Um, well, I mean, I could put I could put this into a calculator, but I guess you can write it as. This is. Four squared times two squared. So sixteen minus one over four times two squared. Well, what's what's two squared? Two squared is, um. Does that make sense? Did I do that right? Four. Four times two. Yeah. So this is. Sixteen minus one over sixteen. Which is big. Uh, so then that's the slope of the tangent. And so then our actual thing will be, uh, at X equals eight. So why? We need, we need, we need F of. F of eight. So F of eight is. Eight squared plus four over eight minus ten. Sixty four plus a half minus ten. So that's fifty four plus a half. So as you say, fifty four, five. The exact. Yeah, and so to make the line, uh. We use this method. Uh, the slope was, oh, yeah, the slope is two fifty five over sixteen. That's what this simplifies to. Two fifty five. Over sixteen. Um, so this method is like, it's, um, to make a line. I forget what it's called. But Horowitz uses it, and it makes a good amount of sense. So it's pretty much just rise over run is the slope. Yes, so there, and we just rearrange this to make it Y equals. Right? So it saves you from doing, uh, otherwise I would just put in Y because MX plus B, put a point in and then solve for B. This does have less steps, so I like it. Okay, and so Y equals two fifty five over sixteen X. Um. Minus eight times two fifty five over sixteen plus fifty four point five. Whatever. Some. Some, some P value. That's number five. So number six is next. Number six is a car driving along a freeway with traffic has traveled S of T. S of T. Uh, meters. So S of T is T cubed minus six T squared. So that's nineteen in T seconds. A determine the time in seconds when the velocity of the car is zero. Uh, remember V of T equals S prime of T. Right? So S prime of T is three T squared minus twelve T plus nine. So we're looking for when does this equal zero? Okay, it's just our factoring, but I can just factor that. So this is zero equals three. T squared minus four T plus three. Well, we need two numbers now that add to the middle number, multiply to the last number. Uh, and so. We can just do, uh, one, negative one times the root three. So three T minus one, two minus three. So, uh, uh, so sorry, T, well, T equals T obviously, but T equals. One, three. So there you go. That's the two points where it's stopped. And determine the acceleration of the car when the velocity is zero. Basically, the acceleration is the derivative, so. Uh, V prime of T equals the acceleration of T. So that's gonna be six T minus twelve. So, uh, well, so I got two points here. Let's see, what should I have got? Yeah, one and three. Oh, this is just butcher. So velocity is zero. The acceleration of the car while the acceleration of one equals six minus twelve. Six. Um, and the acceleration at three is eighteen. So anybody stop me if I got questions.
Wait, could you, um, go back up to like number five? Oh, we we support with like the equation and stuff.
The line, the actual line?
Yeah.
Here, here is where I start making the line. That's the first step of making it right, right after I found the slope.
Yeah. Because you're getting like seventy three.
Uh, where are you getting seventy three?
Uh, the solution is getting seventy three.
Oh.
Yeah, I have no idea how.
Question five? Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. So. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, so I, I, I just didn't solve this, that's probably seventy-three, that negative, that negative, this, I just didn't finish. Eight times two fifty-five over sixteen plus fifty-four, right, so. Sixty. Sixteen, if, four, five, right, so. This is probably negative seven, negative seven, let's see. Negative A, I just didn't want to do it because it's just a bunch of. Just you just plug it into a calculator. Five is negative seven, really, the final line should be Y equals two fifty-five over sixteen X minus seven. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move on to number seven, number seven is find DY by DX for the following function. So for Y equal, well, for the following relation, it's not even a function. Tan X over one minus secant X. So I'm going to rewrite this, of course, as tan X. Times one minus secant X to the power of minus one. So DY by DX will be, so the first, well, I'll do it this way, the derivative of the first one, secant squared X times the second one. Minus secant X or minus one. Plus the first one, X times the derivative of the second, also the derivative of the second one is minus one times one minus secant X. To the minus two times the derivative of the inside, derivative of the inside is something I don't know, so. So I'm just looking for what's the derivative of. Went to the wrong book. Secant is secant tan. So. And that's it, that's. Negative secant X, tan X. Okay, we can simplify this, so. Secant squared X over one minus, you can't, not squared, sorry, just regular secant. X. Again, wrong. Minus tan X. Times negative secant X, tan X. All over one minus secant X. Squared. Simplify this a little bit, so I'll multiply top and bottom here by one minus secant X. Secant X. Multiply there. So this, and then here I'm going to simplify a little bit too, so it's one minus secant. Secant X. Secant squared X. Nine plus. Secant X, tan squared X. All over one minus secant X. Squared. Okay, and so then this is going to be. Reverse, versus distributing, so it's. Secant squared X minus secant cubed X plus secant. X. Tan squared X. One minus secant X squared. And that is not how it's simplified, so let's see what happens, yeah, everything's right so far. Secant squared minus secant cubed plus secant tan X, okay, so everything's right, this is, they just simplified a little bit more, how did they simplify? Oh, they used an identity. Okay, so they used an identity to, so this, this, I would, I'm not a teacher, but I would accept this as an answer. But go a little further, if you know that secant squared X minus secant X plus. Secant X, so the identity is that tan squared X is equal to secant squared X minus one. Okay, so of course now this lets us do a little bit more. On minus secant X. Squared, so this is going to be secant squared X minus secant cubed X. Plus secant cubed X minus secant. X. All over. Yeah, so it's one minus secant X squared, so that cancels. So next line is secant squared X minus secant X. Over one minus. Secant X. Squared. So you can factor it from the top here, you can factor out a negative secant. Yeah, you can factor a negative secant from the top, so negative secant. X, so this would be. Negative secant X plus one. Over negatives, one minus secant X. Squared, so this and that can cancel. Which isn't actually, they're missing the negative sign in the answer, I think. Unless I'm, somehow they flipped the fraction too, I don't know how they went through the step to that stuff. So my final answer is secant X over one minus secant X. Oh, yeah, I was sorry, yeah, yeah, no. What are they doing? Secant, somehow this is still negative on the bottom, I mean, this is like negative one times, oh, I. It's really no difference, for some reason, they made the answer secant X over. So positive in the front here, and then just the negative of the version, so it's of the bottom, I mean, so it's that. But there is no, I don't see any reason to go from that trick, so really, the final answer is. I guess if you don't want a negative in the front, but changing. Yeah, okay, there we go, that's number seven, but had a little bit to it.
So wait, do we have to do that like identity thing, or can we just like leave it?
Um, not sure, yeah, this, this will get you the answer just the same as the final answer, well. It'll like, it'll get you the derivative, it is the derivative, but. I, I guess I would know my trig, I have to, I have to try to spend some time memorizing them too, I don't know very well, so. Yeah, I guess I would. I, I, I don't know for sure if I'm gonna know them for the test, but. Okay, so number eight. Okay, so we're finding the second derivative of Y equals one over X plus tan X. Okay, so well, so the first derivative, so it's X at the bottom here. The first derivative, Y prime, is going to be negative one over X squared plus secant squared X. Just to make sure, yeah, that's the first derivative, so second derivative is going to be negative, positive two. Over. X bar of three. Plus, so this is secant squared X, the same thing as saying. That, right, that's the same, that's the same thing. So that's chain rule here, so we're gonna say secant X. Times the derivative of secant X, which is secant X. So my final answer will be Y double prime equals two over X cubed. Plus two secant squared X. Tan X. But there's a still negative for some reason, the first term, why is it still negative, or does it make sense? I don't see why it would still be negative, I maybe. I, I have, yeah, I'm not, I, I don't mean to, to. Instantly blame the thing, but I think it's just supposed to be positive, that, that is right, because they're doing pretty much the derivative of this, the derivative, that's where they, me and the solution changes, so. My derivative of this is, so the derivative of one over X squared. Is, so another way to write this is negative X to the minus two. So the derivative of this is negative one times negative two, X to the minus three. Right, so the negative one's still on the front, brought the negative two down, lowered it by one, so that's two over X cubed. Right, but they, they say negative two.
Wait, isn't it just supposed to be two?
Yeah, it is just supposed to be two, yeah.
Wait, no, like, when you bring down like the power, isn't it just supposed to be two, not negative two?
Oh, it's still the negative, it's still, it still has the sign, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right, you're right. Yes, okay.
So I think I'm right, so I think this is the correct thing, so. Only difference between this and the question is, there's a negative sign in the answer of the solution. Okay, so. Number nine. Any more questions of this cat? Okay, just two more. So find all X values on the graph of F of X, so find all X values on F of X. Which is X minus two, cos X. For X is between. Zero and two pi, where the tangent line has a slope of two, okay. So, well, to find any kind of tangent line, we need F prime of X, so that's going to be one minus two. Times negative sine X, right, so which is one plus two sine X, okay, so. Okay, so the. The. Looking for, yeah, so we want the, the slope of the tangent to be two, so we're looking pretty much for where this is equal to two. Right, and so we're just gonna solve this, so it's gonna be one equals two sine X. Right, subtraction both sides, and then, so I'm gonna say sine X equals half. And, oh, okay, that makes, yeah, so, well, if we just think of our sine graph quickly. Zero to pi. Pi. Pi over two. Three pi over two, so. Where is it equal to a half, well, it's equal to a half here, here, and that's it, that's where it's equal to a half. So this would be pi over four, and this would be. Well, this one, well, I don't, I don't know, it's off my head, so it'd be pi over two plus pi over four. So that would be, this is a four, and a two, so three pi over four, because that's the two answers. And is that correct? No. Maybe. F prime of X is two sine X, this two. Well, I got everything right up till here, but when I brought out the sine graph, that's when I, that's when I got it wrong, but I don't see. Unless I'm completely muddling up something here. I don't really see how I missed it up. That's pi over, unless I have this, this wrong, that's, that's how it looks like, right, go up here. The whole thing is two pi. Where is sine X equal to a half? This X value, this X value. That's strange. Sign, even if I do sine inverse of a half. Oh, no, I did it pi over six, okay, so. So I guess, I, I could just do, I could just solve for X here, that's pi over six, of course, that's one, that's one of the correct solutions. How, though, so I, I'm messing up something here completely with this, but I don't really know what I'm missing up, where is, this is the graph of sine of X. Pi is in the middle, pi over. Let's look, let's look at, does. So. See, you know what sine X looks like. Oh, so it's, it's, I'm just making an assumption that I'm not allowed to make. Okay, so. What I, what I assumed is that this, this is one, this is zero, then this must be where it's at a half. Right, like, so half, halfway between this must be where it's at a half, that's just. So it's, it's just, it's just not true, so it's a little further this way, not in the middle, so it's not gonna be halfway between, it's not gonna be pi over four. And, so that's where I, so. Just assumed that, so first angle is pi over six, well, so. We look at C A S T, where is sine positive, well, sine's also positive in this quadrant, how do we get an angle to that quadrant? Well, it's just gonna be, so that's X one, X two is going to be pi minus pi over six. Right, so that's gonna be five pi over six. No, that's wrong. That is not how math works, six pi over, no, no, that is. How, yes, that makes, I'm in a brain mode. Okay, so if everybody's good with that, I'll move on. Last one from this lab, so the last one here is. Number ten, where it says find the second derivative of this relation, which is secant X plus cotan X. Yes, we just find the second derivative, so, okay, so first derivative is, so the derivative of secant X. Is secant tan. Secant X. Tan X plus the derivative of cotan X, which is negative cosecant squared X. Okay, and. Pretty, I guess, first derivative, there you go, the second derivative will be, so the derivative of the first one, secant. X, tan X, times the second one, tan X, plus the first one, times the derivative of the second one, which is. Which is just secant squared X, not negative, I thought it was negative. We, which is just that, erase something up here, Max, you did, which is just secant squared X. Minus the derivative of cosecant squared X, so remember that, we can do a little chain rule action here, so it's gonna be two. Times cosecant squared X, and then, sorry, two times cosecant. That, and then the derivative of cosecant is negative cosecant cot. Negative cosecant X. Cotan X. Yeah, I'm just getting from my notes. So Y double prime is secant X, tan squared X plus secant cubed X. Minus two plus two cosecant squared cotan X. Yep, and that's it. Okay, so that's love number four, or lab number five, I mean. If you want to lab number six. Okay, which has some tricky questions, and you get a little difficult now. Yeah, feasibly, we could get through all this, but probably it's going to get, the questions are gonna suck in. Okay, so. Let's move on now, so if anyone has any questions there, I'll move on. So this is maybe lab number six now.
Go over the last question again, please?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, so I started with, this is the equation, sorry about that. So I, to find the derivative, I take the derivative of each part separately, so the derivative of secant X is secant tan X. Secant, secant X, tan X. Plus the derivative of this, the root of cotan is negative cosecant squared X. Okay, that's fine for that, technically, I could have done another step here, just combining this, but. It's okay. So now the derivative of this, well, so I need to do the derivative of the first bit, which is the product rule, so, so. The derivative of the first one is secant X, tan X, times the second one. Plus the first one, times the derivative of the second one, so by first one, second one, I mean, secant X and tan X. Derivative of tan X is. Derivative of tan X is secant squared X, great. Then I did the derivative of this piece right here, right, so that's the same thing as saying, I want the derivative of um. Uh, negative cosecant X squared, kind of better way to look at it, it's a chain rule. So for chain rule, the derivative of this is gonna be negative two. Times the inside, cosecant X lowered the exponent by one, so it's just the one there. Times the derivative of the inside, well, the derivative of cosecant X is negative cosecant X cotan X. And then I just combined all the things that I can combine, so first one here, I can combine secant X, uh, I can combine the two tan Xs, so it's secant X can squared X. Plus secant cube X, secant, secant cubed X, no, that doesn't, that doesn't sound right, but it is right, I guess, secant X cubed. Um, the, the negatives cancels, there's one negative here, one negative here, so it's gonna be plus two. Cosecant squared, there's two cosecants in here, cotan X.
Thank you.
So, does that make sense?
Yeah, it was just with the second derivative, I forgot the second is the derivative, um, to get.
Why, why'd we write Y, what'd you say?
No, for the second uh order derivative, the sec X, tan X, tan X, I just forgot that the derivative of sec X is secant, so next.
Okay, yeah, there you go, yeah, so that's, there we go. Um, okay, so lab number six, let's give it a go, question one. Question one, um, given Y equals F of U. Okay, and U equals G of X, of course, um, find D Y by D, so using Leibniz notation for, okay, so I'm sorry, this, 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 uh. This isn't actually part of the question, this is just saying, using Leibniz notation, understanding these things up here. The actual question is saying, Y equals uh tan U, where uh. Not Y, where U equals nine X plus two. Okay, so uh using Leibniz notation, D Y by D X. Um, is gonna equal, so the derivative of. The derivative, well, I guess we start over here, so the derivative of D U by D X, right, is um. Uh, nine, uh, is just gonna be nine, that, there you go, um, and so. Um, the derivative of this with respect to X is gonna have to be uh. Uh, the derivative of tan, so I can't, how do I explain this without actually using the chain rule, sorry, I don't know. Well, so the whole, the main idea is it's gonna be D Y by D U times D U by D X. So not actually, but kind of the D is cancelled here, right, you can kind of think of it like that, at least. Right, so D Y by D U was the derivative of this thing with respect to U, just fine, that's what, so the thing inside the function. Okay, and then times the derivative of U with respect to X, well, we figured that out, it's nine. Figure that out, it's nine. Okay, so let's actually do that, so, so D Y by D U, well, what's the derivative of tan U with respect to U? It's gonna be coast, uh, that's gonna be secant squared, secant squared U. Right, times nine. So it's gonna be, um, uh, so that, so this is this. And this is this. Okay, and uh, just one last step is just to replace the U with uh nine X plus two. Oh, and then I guess we can move the nine to the front, so secant squared, nine X plus two, there you go, and that's your back. Okay, problem number two is uh decompose the following function in the form, Y equals F of Q, U equals G of X, and then find D Y by D X of the function of X. Okay, so um, yeah, that makes sense, so Y equals cotan squared X, that's what we're looking. So one way to rewrite this is it's gonna be cotan X all squared, that's what that really means. In other words, F. Uh, in other words, U equals cotan X, okay, so F of U equals U squared. So maybe think about this for a second, but it is. The same thing, we're, we're, here, if, if, if Y equals F of X, right? Um, so then again, to find D Y by D X, we need to find D Y by D U. Times D U by D X. Well, so uh, what's D Y by D U, right, so if Y equals F of. You, yeah, I guess it, this should be of you, well, um, that's going to be. D Y by D U is going to be two U. Right, and then um, D U by D Y, was D U by D X, I mean, is going to be um. For just the derivative of this right here. D U by D X is, well, what's the derivative of cotan X, that's negative cosecant squared X. Right, and then we just multiply these results. D Y by D U, two U, times negative cosecant squared X. Pretty much done, negative two, instead of U, I'm gonna write uh what US, so cotan X. Times cosecant squared. And they. That's the. Okay, numbers three, again, anyone stop me? Um, number three is find D Y by D X if Y equals uh six plus. Secant pi. X squared, I'm gonna assume that's all in the secant. In the secant function, yeah, okay. Okay, so uh, well, one way to rewrite this is six plus secant pi X squared. To the one half, right, so uh, D Y by D U, well, it's gonna be the derivative of the outside function, right, so it's gonna be one half. Six plus secant pi X squared. To the power of negative a half, times the derivative of the inside, well, what's the derivative of the inside, really only looking for the derivative of that. Right, so again, we gotta have to use chain rule, nest them inside a chain rule, so the derivative of secant is secant X tan X. Yeah, so secant pi over X, uh, pi over X squared, thinking too much about radians. Secant X squared. Tan pi X squared, times the derivative of the inside, well. The derivative of the inside is just two. Two pi X. Two pi X. Yep, uh, so. Uh, we can just write this as the one over two, six plus secant. Pi X squared, square root of that. Um, should these be all multiplied together, yeah, I guess they should, so it's actually not one over that. It's just going to be. Two pi X, secant pi X squared. Tan pi X squared. Which includes. Number four. Number four is um. See, okay, so let Y equal, let Y equal. F of U. Plus three X squared. And U equal. X cubed minus two X. If F of. Four equals six. And Y prime of. Two equals. Eighteen. Find. F prime of four. Uh, okay, that makes, yeah. So, well, let's first start with, I mean. Pretty clearly, find the derivative of this, right, so the derivative of this will be, that's, I mean, that's like, pretty clearly the step to take. So it's gonna be two times the inside. Times the derivative of the inside, well, what's the derivative of F of U, well. The derivative with respect to X of F of U, well, so that's gonna be um, the Y prime of U. Times D U by D X, well, what's D U by D X, it's gonna be over here, times three X squared minus two. Okay, um. Running out of space, plus the derivative of the last thing. Okay, um, so. We're looking for F prime of four. F prime of four. Okay, so. Two, a, two, yes, okay, so, well, let's look for, let's try to find that, so let's put in. Um, four, so it says you Y prime of four, so it's kind of weird to use Y as a function, but that's kind of what we're doing here. So this is gonna be two F of U. It, it should be U, U of four too, but, so three times four. Times F prime, just in brackets, two, F prime of U. Times three times four squared minus two. Plus, okay. So Y prime of four equals two F of U plus twelve. Um, times F prime of U. Uh, went too many brackets here, I don't know what happened. No, I don't have one too many brackets, I'm. Three times sixteen is, three times sixteen is forty eight. So. Uh, times forty eight minus two. When I say, times forty eight minus two, so times forty six. Plus three. Not times Y prime, that's, that's over here, right, okay, well, so then, let's quickly look, well, what's U of four? Because it's kind of like U as a function, right, so U of four, use this definition of U over here, it's gonna be four. Cubed minus two times four, four cubed. So four times four, thirty sixty four, no, that's not gonna work for that. Oh, I made a mistake, yeah, I made a mistake. Yeah, we're not doing Y, okay, sorry, this is um. Yeah, I made a mistake, we're not doing Y prime before, we're doing Y prime of two. I'll just erase it, just, just these two lines. Okay. Okay, Y prime of two. It's two times. F of U. Plus three times two. Times F prime of U. Times three times two squared minus two. Plus three, okay, Y prime of two equals two. F of U plus six. F prime of U now, uh, twelve, ten, so this is gonna be times ten. Yeah, ten plus three. Good, um, and now, let's look at U of two. Right, we're looking at U of two, right, because we need, we need that for this inside. Well, it says F prime of U, well, remember, we're doing Y prime of two, so we need to replace X to. I can explain that better if someone is struggling with this. But yeah, so you noticed, well, that's eight minus four, well, that's four, so look here. Why, we also know Y prime of two is eighteen, so I can just say eighteen equals two F of U. Oh, so sorry, so not F of U, two F of four. Right, two F of four, because we, F of U anymore, so that, found out U is four. Plus twelve. That was actually kind of useless to do, so didn't have to do that, whatever. Um. Times F prime of four, well, look at that, that's what we're looking for, right, times ten plus three. Okay, well, now we just have to rearrange for um, F prime of four. So one more thing we know is that, uh, it gave us a question, F of four is six, we can replace that there, so. Eighteen equals two times six plus twelve. F prime of four times ten plus three, okay, so eighteen over twenty four. Equals F prime of four. Times ten plus three, eighteen over twenty four minus, plus there's a minus three. Equals ten F prime of four. Okay, so, uh, well, yeah, so whatever, so then, um, of course, just divided by two. Okay, is F prime of four, and I'll just convert that into calculator, so it's a fraction, eighteen over twenty four, I'm not typing it right. Eighteen over twenty four minus three. All over ten, I got this answer, let's see if that's correct, I got negative nine of the four. Equals. Okay, negative matter before. So that's kind of a weird question, had a little bit of algebra to do it, but. Hit it through. Anybody has any questions, I don't know. Yeah, otherwise, good. Number five is use the information from the table to find H prime of A at the given value of A, okay? So, um. We're looking for, so, yeah, this is number five, so it's, it gives us, it also gives us a table, of course, but it also, it gives us this, so. H of X equals F of G of sine of X. Went too many brackets. There you go, yeah, F of G of sine of X, we're looking for H prime of zero. Uh, amazing, A equals A. A equals zero, so we're looking for H prime of zero. Okay, well, let's just find the derivative, okay, well, so we need, it gives us a table, it's good, the table's gonna help us soon. So, okay, so what's this, so it's F prime of G of sine of X. Times the derivative of the inside, which is G prime of sine of X, times the derivative of the inside, which is cosine. Okay, um. So now, H prime of zero is going to be F prime of G of sine of zero. Times G prime of sine of zero, times cos of zero. Okay, so I don't write that each time, so that equals. F prime of G of sine of zero is zero, times G prime of zero, times one. Okay, well, what's G of zero, well, the good thing, the table tells us that, G of zero is zero, so F prime of zero. Times, what's G prime of zero, well, that's two. And this is just this information, I'm just getting from the table, F prime of zero is five times two times one, uh, times. One is ten. And those. Okay. Okay, so next, oh, next one's not that hard, actually, I thought it was gonna be harder, maybe the one after is gonna be harder, we'll see. So the next thing is number six, which is saying, use the rules for the sums of powers to compute the sum. From I equals five to ten of I. From I equals five to ten of I. Hmm, okay. So. This is equal to. The sum. I from one to ten. Of I minus the sum. From one to four. Of I. The reason we do this, because now there's a formula. So the formula is. This is equal to, so. Yeah, just right over here, N, N plus one over two. And I will just make sure that's. It's gonna look like my book here. And then plus one over two. Okay, so. And where N is the, is the upper limit, right? So then this one is just ten times eleven over two. Minus four times five over two. Right? So that's fifty-five minus ten is forty-five. So that's equal to forty. Number seven. Suppose that. The sum. From. One to a hundred of A I equals fifteen. And the sum. From one to a hundred of B I is negative twelve. Compute the following sum, okay? So the following is to compute. The sum. From one. To a hundred of three A I minus four B I. Because you can treat this like derivatives, the same kind of idea as a derivative, like not, not, not actually doing the derivative, but like. What you're allowed to expand and all that, so this would turn into three. Times the sum. Yeah, three times the sum. From one to a hundred of A I minus four times the sum. From, uh, not zero, sorry, from one to a hundred of B I. Well, we know what these are, so it's three times fifteen minus four times negative twelve. Right, which is forty-five. Plus forty-eight. Which is ninety-three. There you go. Number eight. Unless somebody has a question?
Yeah, yeah, um, could you go back up to like number six? So, wait, could you explain again?
So, uh, which, which, which part? Okay, this is the whole thing.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Okay, so we start with, we start with this, right? So that's, that's what the question gives us. So, I'm allowed to split that up, so think about it like this, we're looking for the numbers from five to ten. Right, but for all, sorry, the, the sum of I's from five to ten. Right? So, this is the same thing as if we're taking the range from one, so we're, 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 we want five to ten here, that's our. That's our goal, right? That's, that's the range we want. That's the same as if we took the whole. Range from one to ten. Right, but then we just took away. We just took away the range from four to, from, from, sorry, from one to four. And which, so, remember, these things are, work with integers, right? So it really has to stop there. There's no numbers, just integers there. Right, so that's kind of what I'm doing. This is. The range from five to ten is the same thing as the range from one to ten. Minus the range from one to four. All that's left is the range from five to ten. The reason you do this is because this is actually calculatable. This is like, you can actually do this, right? But I mean, this was also calculatable. Calculatable. I don't know what the word is. But we have a formula for this, which is N. Where N is the upper limit, N times N plus one over twelve, so ten. Times ten plus one. Over two, I said twelve bags, I mean two. Ten, so N times N plus one over two, ten. Plus ten plus one over two, minus four. Times four plus one over two. Right? And. Yeah, and then we just, so we just do that, so fifty-five minus ten is four.
Yeah, I know what you said, so I was just confused about like how you got four, but.
Yeah. Do you see why now? Yeah. Okay, so, uh, number eight. Using summation, sorry, using summation properties and formulas to rewrite the equivalent. Use summation properties and formulas to rewrite and evaluate the following sum. Only I could read. So from I, from, uh, well, it's whatever, it's I. Eleven to twenty. Of J squared minus ten J. Well, we're gonna use a similar idea for this one, right? So this is gonna be equal to the sum. From I, I'm sorry, I guess if I'm, I can't mix up Js and Is, so this is the J. This is also a J, but I'll, it probably will mess up. Of J squared minus ten J. Right, minus the sum. Twenty, from. J equals of one to ten. Of Js squared minus ten J. Right, so one lower than this. Right, okay, and so now I can break this up. So. This is going to be the sum, I won't write the J thing, just to make it a little simpler. J squared. Minus ten. One, twenty. J. Minus. This sum. From one to ten. Of J squared minus ten times the sum. Of one to ten, ten J. All these things are things we can calculate. So the sum from one to N of J squared is equal to N times N plus one. Times two N plus one. Over six. And that's. Check if that's correct. Um, and this one, yep, there you go. So. Well, I guess, this was just a kind of a note. This is just kind of a. Note. That's ugly. There. So. For the squared things, right, so the, the, the upper limit is twenty, so it's gonna be twenty times twenty, oops. Twenty times twenty-one times forty-one. Over six. Yeah. Minus ten. Times this one, right, remember this one is N, it was N plus one over two. Right, so the upper limit is twenty, so it's twenty times twenty-one over two. Minus. This sum, same as this idea, it's gonna be. Ten. Eleven. Twenty-one over six. Plus ten. Times same as the idea, is this one? Ten. Eleven over two. Other vector. Okay, and then, uh, well, we can just do this, right, so. And so this is twenty times twenty-one times forty-one. Six, I'll just do it all in. Ten times. Plus. Ten times ten times eleven. Over two, so I got nine hundred and thirty-five, yep. Nine thirty-five. All right, you wanna remain some next? I think after, maybe after this question, I'll take a small break for, just get a bite to eat. Okay, let's do a ribbon some quickly. So. Nine. Is, uh, so it's looking for. Looking for, well, the best way to say is, just to say the question, so R four. Uh, equals, sorry, R four. Four. One over X squared plus one on minus two to two. Okay. So let's quickly identify what R N is. R N is the limit. As N, no, it's not, that's the definition, that's an integral. So it's just the sum. And maybe just find it. Although I could work it out graphically. Just want to check that, that's on the next page, so. So R N is equal to the sum from one to N, so I can say. I, I was one to N of Delta A times F of A I. Nevermind, I said that like I was gonna continue. Okay, so we need all these parts. Well, so what's Delta A? Delta A is B minus A over N. But this is A and B. So two plus two over four is. Right, so what this is pretty much saying, if anybody needs a refresher. Is we're going from the range negative two to two. And we want to break it into four parts. So. Not too hard to even just work it out like this. The amount of space between each part is gonna be one. That's what this delta is. It's a little, I mean, it's a little hard to, harder to just like work out like this, not that hard actually, ever, but. Harder to work out if, um. If it's like a fraction, but this is case of them being one, so. Works out, um, and you can check it like that, right? Of course, the actual integrals are for where it goes to infinity. And goes to infinity. So, um. So, our A one, oh, no, sure, A zero. Our A zero equals A is our starting point. And that's negative two. Our A one is the next point over, so that'd be negative one. A two is zero. A three is one. A four is two. Which is B. Right, so this should match it before, and the N on the R here, so R four should be your final. Your final point, right, as you started there. Okay, well, so then we just, we can just do the sum now, right? So R. Four equals the sum, and I'll show it a little differently. Whoa, that's a terrible sum. Uh, I'll factor out the, well, just, just pull out the Delta A to start, and so it's going from. I equals one to four of F of A I. So pretty much. It's one times, okay. So we start with F of A one. Plus F of. A two plus F of A three plus F of. A four. There you go. We skip F of A zero because, uh, you see how this starts at one, right? This, this thing here. Right, this, this, so we, we don't even consider it, yeah, so if that counter started at zero, then yeah, it would. It also, uh, it also makes sense. On the, in terms of the graph, right? So if you have. Something like this, right? Let's just say that's our function. Whatever. And we're finding the right-handed. Integral, well. Well, right-hand integral from A to B here. And let's say this is what I'm separating, this is my, this is my. Okay, well, it's not very accurate to think, but let's just say this is, uh, negative. Negative five, negative one, right? So I'm splitting this into four bits, so this will be negative four, negative three, negative two, negative one. Well, so, to find the right-handed limit, right, I don't actually care about F of zero, of the zeroth position. Right, that, that would be this right here. To find the right limit, I actually need, I need to start at the first A value. Which would be this one here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Right, if I was finding the left one, that's a different story, the left one, yeah, I would start here, and I'd meet right here and go like that, we're not finding the left, we're finding the right.
So, um, for like the left limit, would you just like skip the last one?
You would skip the last one, exactly, yeah, that's exactly right, you'd skip the last one instead of the first.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, exactly, so it, it goes from, the only difference between, so here, R N is I equals one to N. Uh, L N is. I equals zero to N minus one. Right, so you start at zero, and you stop at the one right before the last. And then still, still Delta A, whatever.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good. So then, yeah, so then, okay, so then, what's, okay, well, what's F of A one? F of. So where's our function? Lost it here, whoa, okay, getting messy, one over X squared plus one. So, uh, so that's gonna be a half. Right, so one over negative one squared plus one is a half. K plus. One over zero squared plus one, so that's just one. Uh, one over one squared plus one, plus another half. And then, one over four plus one is a fifth. Okay, so that's two plus a fifth. Right, which is. Ten fifths plus a fifth. Which is eleven fifths. Which is the. Okay, guys, I'll, I'll just take a five-minute break, I don't even, I mean, a lot of people want to take a longer break. I'll just, I'll just take a five-minute break, get something to eat quickly, and then I'll be good to go.
Don't rush, take your time.
Yeah.
Eating in five minutes.
Well, yeah, probably, probably, we'll see. I guess I'll come back soon, okay, not too long. Okay. Okay, so talk to everybody soon, in a minute. Okay, okay, so talk to everybody soon in a minute. Okay, hi, guys. I'm back.
Hello.
Hopefully, everybody's still here.
Hi. I'm just eating.
Okay, sounds good. We're taking a food break. Yeah, let me close this. Okay, so, yeah, I'm ready to, ready to keep going.
I just joined. What were you guys doing?
We're doing the, the lab questions. So we've been doing since, from lab number three onward. So we're on lab number six now. We're just gonna, I think we're just gonna finish lab number six for today and leave, leave number nine for, or am I on six? Sorry, I'm talking about the right one. Yeah, I'm on number six. There's still number seven for tomorrow, but probably tomorrow I'll do a whole bunch of these over again. So we'll see. Okay. So now I'm on, so lab number six, question 10. Okay, so question 10 is saying, express the following endpoint sum in signal notation, but do not evaluate. So just write the signal notation for it. So R 20, which obviously this would be a long one to, to do for sine x on. Yeah?
I can't see your screen.
Yes, I forgot to share my screen. There we go. Okay.
And are you sure that you are recording?
Yeah, I'm still recording. Yeah, I did, didn't stop. Okay. So R 20 for sine x on zero to pi. So yeah, okay, so delta A would be still b minus a over n, right? So it's pi minus zero over 20, or pi over 20. Okay, so for doing the R notation, right? My, my zoom is freaking out for some reason. I'm. Okay, okay, I think it might work now. Okay, so the R n is equal to, I'll bring the delta A out to the front, so delta A. So the right side is from I equals one to n of f of ai. Right? So if we're looking for R 20, that's equal to delta A, which is pi over 20, times the sum from I equals one to 20 of f of ai. And so f of ai would be, I guess I'll just actually write it in here. So f of ai, so the function would be sine of ai. Well, we can actually write an expression for ai. So ai is equal to the starting point zero plus i times delta A. So think about that for a second, right? So if we, our, our first point will be one movement away from the starting point. So the starting point is zero. If I is one, then it'll be delta, delta A away. If it's two, it'll be two times delta A away. Three, it'll be three times delta A away, right? So in general, ai, the i, a, I guess, is the starting point plus i times delta A, or zero plus i times delta A. Which of course can simplify to i times delta A. So this is actually just going to be sine of i delta A. And that's the answer. Oh, that is not the answer. Yes, because we can simplify a little further by just saying delta A is pi over 20. There. Nothing. So did that make sense? And we don't have to calculate it. It was just to write the notation. So 11 is express the following limit as an integral. Okay, so we're getting into integrals. So the following limit is the limit as n goes to infinity of the sum from I equals one to n of sine squared to pi xi star of x over, over zero to one. Okay, so show this as an integral. Well, so our integral is going to look like that. We're going from zero to one. We're going to have a dx at the end. And in the middle here, we just have our function. Big. And that is not the right answer, because the function is actually a little more complicated. It's two pi times x, right? So it's going to be two pi x, two pi is there from somewhere. And there you go. Notice, these are both at the end here. They signify, they mean kind of the same thing. It's just that dx is the, is the idea of delta x when, when delta x is infinitely small. And this integral sign is, is more of a general idea, right? It's, it's saying we're integrating all these components, all of these parts of the sum into one piece, and that's this whole piece, and multiply each piece by dx. It's kind of what the integral is saying. Okay, that's that question. Next one is express the, so number 12, I mean, 15. Come on. Let me write, there we go. So 12. And 12 is to express the limit as n goes to infinity of L n as a, as a definite integral identifying the correct interval. Okay, so let's just say here L n equals two pi over n the sum from I equals one to n of two pi i minus one over n cos yeah, cos two pi i minus one over n. So it's, it's saying, write this as a definite integral, right? Okay. So well, let's figure this out here. So L n, right? So L n is why? Why is it not limit? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Express the limit as n goes to infinity, yes, as a definite integral. So it's, it's this. The limit as n goes to infinity, right? Okay, so first of all, delta x or in this case, it was called delta x up here, right? So or ax or whatever you want to call it, delta, I mean, sorry, not x, delta A, delta x, same thing. That's always equal to b minus a over n, right? Which is equal to two pi over n. I got that from right here. That's that, that's that piece in the front there. Right? So yeah. Okay, really? Okay, I see how that, okay, so delta x is two pi or n. So in other words, b minus a equals two pi. Right? Let's try to deconstruct this. Because there's two things that happened here twice, right? So this shows up in two places. Here and here, right? So what this is kind of saying, and, and another way to express this is, is it's delta A times i minus one, right? Because I just moved that n over. Now it's two pi over n. But it's delta A times n minus one. If we look back at our previous question, right? For over here, a way to write ai is the starting point plus i delta A. So the starting point plus i delta A. And that's not what we have here. So let's see why. Two pi. Okay, now we have. See if I wrote it. That, I had a feeling that this would somehow turn into starting point, because I could, I could obviously expand this, but it would just be negative one, delta A plus i delta A. Or maybe that's what it's supposed to be. So maybe I guess the starting point is negative two pi. Remember delta A, no, 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 delta is two pi over n, nevermind. That doesn't make sense. Well, does the, is the question, the answer here? Okay, so clearly, you're gonna look at the solution.
And the solution, it doesn't really say how they do it.
Yeah, so the solution, it's, it has this, right? It has, it has this part up here that everybody wrote there. Then it says, and we can see that for every i between one and n, we have that xi minus one, previously, we have that x. Previous, we have that X. So for every I between one. And N, we have that XI minus one to the previous XI is equal to two pi. X, no, is, sorry, two pi. I minus one over N. But how?
I think they just substitute that as X, then, oh, that's what I'm assuming.
But, uh, yeah, yeah, so that is X. Or in other words, it's XI. But I would have thought that it would be the starting point. It'd be like the starting point. Plus I times delta A. That's what makes sense to me. Starting point plus I times delta A. Or there is, oh, it is kind of the starting point plus I times delta A. Oh, okay. Why I minus one? Well, so this is kind of like saying zero plus, so the starting point is zero plus delta A times, I, I don't know why the minus one is there. But it, this does complete the form kind of. So the starting point would be zero, right? And then our endpoint is two pi, right? Because if, if, if B minus A, right, it would be. Yeah, so if, if B minus A equals two pi and A is zero, so B equals two pi. Uh, so then it would just be from zero to two pi. And then we just look at, well, what's the function here? Well, it's gonna be X. This thing kind of represents X. Cos X. At DX. Alright, so weird question. Great question for you. So many questions I left. Good amount still, so. I'll go for another twenty minutes and then we'll see how many questions we can get done. So thirteen. Um, evaluate the integral of the function graph using the formulas for, okay, well. This, this question isn't that interesting. It's just finding the area of circles and triangles. So I think I'll skip it.
Can I ask you a question? Like, can you do one from the textbook real quick?
Uh, I guess so, sure.
I messaged it to you on Discord. Ray T.
Yeah. So for each of the given functions, why, cuz I find the slope of the tangent to its inverse at the point. And the equation of the tangent line to the graph, if it first indicated. Okay, sure. So. Uh, this is, I'll say, uh, question from. Textbook. Uh, so which, oh, which one did you say? Two seventy seven, okay. So two seventy seven. And so it's first of all asking for find the slope, so the, the derivative. Okay, so F of X equals negative X cubed minus X plus two. At the point negative eight, two. So we need to find F inverse. Need to find F inverse prime of negative eight. Pretty much, that's what we need to find. Okay, so that's what we're looking for. Okay, well, so first of all, um, let's look at. Let's try to find F inverse, okay? So to find F inverse, yeah, this is kind of weird. I think I maybe, I, maybe I tried this one too. Okay, so generally to find F inverse, right? You do, well, you just find, you say, okay, well, Y equals negative X cubed minus X plus two. Switch the positions, right? Y cubed minus Y plus two. And you solve for Y. So X minus two, uh, that's not it. X minus two. Um, equals negative Y cubed minus Y. Um, and then you can say, uh, that. Negative X minus two. Plus Y cubed equals Y. And to check this, even though, so it's not a function, obviously, not a function. To check if this makes any sense, we can go to Desmos. And I will. This here. New share here. Okay, so, uh, the original function was negative X cubed minus X. Plus two, okay? And so then the inverse function should be. Although this doesn't seem to have an inverse function, let's just see. Let's see if my thing works, though. So, um, what I said, so I said Y equals. I equals negative X plus two. Plus Y cubed. Okay, doesn't work. So I made a mistake. Hold on, let's just see, let's just see where I made it. I must have made a mistake somewhere. Do you see this? Do you see the screen now? So what did I do? Negative X cubed, is that the question? Negative X. Cubed, negative X plus two, Y equals that, X equals Y cubed, that's Y. Yeah, okay, so this is now you do. Just getting messy. I'll just erase this and credit you. So, um, I can write this, okay, so X minus two equals Y times negative Y. Squared minus one. So then Y equals X minus two over negative Y squared minus one. Or. X minus two, negative Y squared plus one. Okay. Now this, if we go to Desmos, should work. Um, so if I type in. There's our original one. I type in Y equals. Negative irrational function, X minus two over Y squared plus one. Yeah, so you see how now that is actually the inverse function. Although, why is it not a function? So the reason I know this is right is because if I look at Y equals X, well, it is a reflection over Y equals X. Right? It is a, and that's what the function looks like, right? That's what, that's what it should be. A reflection over Y equals X, right? So this is correct, and it is correct in saying this is the, the inverse. Although I, I don't know why it's not actually a function. This does pass the horizontal line unless it doesn't, like here. Doesn't seem to me like it should be a function. Switch back to the one note. So what do we know now that we didn't know before? Well, we know that. Where am I? So we know that this is the inverse, inverse. Relation. Could I find Y prime like this? What would stop me from finding Y prime like this? I don't know. Doesn't seem right. So I'm thinking, okay, well. Okay, so if, if F of X equals, um. What was it? It was negative X cubed minus X plus two. Then the inverse relation is Y equals negative X minus two over Y squared plus one. I could find Y prime. Right? If F of X e- equals Y. I could find Y prime implicitly, implicitly. Um, let's try. I don't know. Let's see if I can see it. So this would be derivative of either side is, uh. Uh, so sorry, again, I'm gonna write this differently. First, I'm just gonna write Y equals minus X minus two. Y squared plus one, minus one. Okay, so now the derivative of each side is Y prime. Minus, uh, the derivative of the first one, which is just one, times the second one. This is Y squared plus one to the power of negative one. Plus the first one, X minus two, times the derivative of the second one. So negative one, Y squared plus one to the power of negative two. Times the derivative of the inside. Well, the derivative of, uh, Y squared is two YY prime. So Y prime equals, uh, negative one over Y squared plus one. Minus X minus two over Y squared plus one squared times two YY. Okay, well, I can deal with this. Keep going. So the second, few ways I can write this actually, but I guess I'll write it like, let's just do this. So Y prime. Plus X minus two over Y squared plus one squared. Times two YY prime equals negative one over Y squared plus one. Actually, I had a Y prime, one plus X minus two, Y squared plus one. Squared times two Y was minus one over Y squared plus one. Okay, well, I do have something. So, um, one over Y squared plus one, negative. Over one plus X minus two. Over Y squared plus one squared times two Y. Let's see, let's, I mean, chances of this working probably pretty low, but let's see if we can find. So do you, do you have the answer from the textbook? Just so I can check after. Okay, ask me the question. So I'm, I'm gonna put this point in to find this.
Yeah, yeah, I do have the answer.
Okay, so I'm gonna put in negative eight, two into this to try to find the, the slope of the tangent at that point. So Y prime equals, so it's. So four plus one over one plus. Negative eight minus two. Over four plus one squared times two, times two. So this is negative a fifth over one plus minus ten over twenty five. Times four. A fifth times one. Minus forty over twenty five. Now I'll just plug this in. So this is. Negative. A fifth. Over one minus forty over twenty five. So I got a third. Is it a third?
It's negative one over ninety six.
All right, not a third. So then either my entire process is wrong. Or I made a little mistake.
There's that formula for finding the derivative of F inverse. It's like.
So.
X is one over the, yeah, that.
Yeah, so F inverse prime is one over F prime of F inverse of X. Right? But you need F inverse of X as a function for this. That's why I couldn't do that. That's why I couldn't do that, right? Couldn't use that. Right? So I was pretty much left with. Hmm, how, how would I do that? How would I do that? Um.
I think, I think I have an idea, but I don't know if it's right. So, um, try like plugging it in into like the inverse function first. And then whatever you get for your Y, plug it in into the F prime. If that makes sense.
Plug the point eight, negative two into here.
Yeah, and to your like inverse first and then.
What would that give us? What would, what's, what would that?
Uh, that's how I did it for like the, those types of questions.
So you plugged in, but so you plugged in eight minus two into this, right? But.
Or no, you just plug in eight, I think, out.
Oh, you plug in eight and then solve for Y?
Okay, yeah.
Oh, cuz we're looking for specifically F prime of something, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I can, I can like tell you which section it is.
Okay. Yeah, I think I get it. I think I get it. So FY equals negative X, what was it? Negative X minus two. Over Y squared. Plus one. So we're not looking for the general formula. We're just looking for these, the slope of the tangent to its original function. It's a slope of the tangent to the inverse function, I mean, at point P. And point P is two eight.
Eight, two, or wait, is it?
Uh, I read the wrong one. Yeah, sorry. Where am I? Negative eight, two. Oh, did I do the, wait, did I plug this in wrong then?
No, it's negative eight, yeah, it's negative.
Yeah, I, I, I put it in there, right? Yeah, so it's negative eight, two. So if I put negative eight into here, it'll give me the Y value on the inverse function at that X value. That makes sense. Yeah, so Y equals minus, minus eight minus two, Y squared plus one. So Y equals minus, minus ten, Y squared plus one. Okay, um, Y equals ten over Y squared plus one. Y squared plus one times Y equals ten. Y cubed plus Y, uh, but what is this? How do we solve this? Oh, I equals ten, Y cubed plus Y minus ten equals zero. So I don't know how to solve this, though. And then I have a, there's multiple Y values that this could be. You know what I mean? This.
Yeah, I think I'm just gonna skip this one. Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, I know, I, it's okay. Yeah, I don't know how much help we're being, right? To figure this out by that. Oh, yeah, you sent me the answer there, I see. I, I, well, but what would that even do? Why would this, this wouldn't really be helpful. Cuz the inverse. Because we'll have multiple Y values. How do you know which one? Well, can't be the same as that one. Yeah, that, it does make sense, though. Put this into the end, put the X value. What if we put the Y value into this? Well, yeah, what if we do that? What if we put the Y value in instead of the X value? Into, let's load. What if we put the Y value in, which is two? So two equals negative X minus two over four plus one. So. Ten equals negative X minus two. Negative ten equals X minus two. Negative eight equals X. Oh, that didn't help us. I just put that into there and I got that. How did I get that? Oh, that, yeah, that doesn't make any difference. That didn't help us because they just found us. That, I would have assumed.
Think you only get one answer for that, uh, when you plug in the Xs for the Ys, the.
Yeah, when you solve the, like, cubic thing, you only get like one answer, which is like.
Oh, okay. Well, you, you, I mean, you get three, but the, two of them are probably complex answers, so you know.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what are the solutions of this? I don't even know how to solve it. I guess you do. You would do like the rational root theorem thing and you do division of polynomials to find it or something. Which I don't know how to do, so. I, I mean, I can also just put this into a calculator and it'll calculate it for me.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Okay, so roots of, I'll go to Wolfram Alpha. Of X U plus X. So two is the only real root there, which also doesn't mean anything, because that's just the point that we got in the first place here. Right? That's just, that's just the point. So we know that points on there. We're trying to find, what is it? We're trying to find F. Pry, F inverse prime of negative eight.
Maybe plug two into that equation now.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we're looking for F inverse prime. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're looking for F inverse prime of negative eight. Well, that's going to be one over F prime of F inverse of negative eight. F inverse of negative eight, we can do. That's just going to be two. So that's going to be one over F prime of two. Right? And then F prime of two, well, well, we just go to the function. So F was a negative, so F prime of X is going to be negative three X squared minus one. So negative three X squared minus one, negative three two squared minus one. Negative three times four minus one. Well, it's not the answer you sent either. So yeah, the negative twelve minus one, negative thirteen. So I got now that that is the answer.
Yeah, I think that's what I got as well. I think it might be wrong. It's like if you look at like part B, it has the exact same slope as well. Because in part B, they put like it into the equation.
Oh, that's that's so dumb. What I didn't even notice that.
Oh, that's true. Yeah. Okay, so then it is negative one over thirteen. So that's how you do it. So even if even if the inverse function is not a function, so if it's just a relation, you can still technically do F inverse of X, because you just put that in for X. Whatever Y value you get back out, well, that can just go here, which was two in this case, and then you do F prime of of two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, I learned something there hundred percent too. I wouldn't like that's that's good practice. I didn't. I didn't know you could do that. So there you go. Figure it out. Okay, guys, well, it's nine o'clock, so I think I'm done for the night. That was a good three hours of calculus. So tomorrow I'll be doing another session. No, not tomorrow. Sorry, not tomorrow. Tomorrow's Thursday, so I have nothing tomorrow. Although I'll probably do some practice. Maybe I'll do like a smaller one. You're like, I mean, this is already kind of small. So I mean, just like no scheduled time. I don't know if I have time tomorrow. I'll do some more, but we'll see. I do. I will finish this where we left off here with the lab and finish lab number seven on Friday at one o'clock. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so Friday at one o'clock, the day of the test is where I'm finishing this. Okay.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to stop the recording.